I want to welcome everybody here today. It's really my pleasure to welcome our new congressman Bradley Byrne. And I appreciate him to come to Bruton for his first town hall meeting in Bruton. And I'm going to turn the mic over to him. If he has a question and answer session, Judy will be coming around with this microphone. If you would, ask your questions through this microphone so we can catch it on tape. Thank you.
Well, I really appreciate the hospitality of your city and the opportunity to use this space in order to allow the public to come in and have a true town hall meeting. And I appreciate everybody coming out today. I do not have a speech. What we do is we come in, I have a couple of ground rules we go over, and then we're going to take your questions and comments. First thing is, I want to make sure if anybody has any individual-type issues, that you take it up with Frasier Payne over there. Frasier's my district director. Some of y'all worked with him when he worked for Joe Bonner. There's some forms you have to fill out in order for us to work for you with the federal agency, so that's the reason for the little piece of paper. And Frasier's the one that will follow up or work with our staff if on us. So if you have any individual things, please see him. Other thing is, and I don't know why I'm about to say this because I'm in Bruton, that, you know, let's all respect one another and make sure that we act right. But I don't even have to say that in Bruton. That's redundant. Y'all always do that. So that's one of the great parts about being here. I'm going to start out with a couple of questions. I'm just kind of doing informal polls with people as I go around these town meetings to wave me sort of figure out where people are. But how many people in here feel like you're personally better off today than you were five years ago? All right? How many of y'all in here today feel like that you're better off at this time in your life than your parents were at this time in their lives? I got some more about that. How many of you think your children will be better off when they're your age than where you are now? There's one. Is there anybody in here, and if this is personal, you don't want to answer, I understand. Is there anybody in here who's lost their health insurance plan or had a substantial increase in their premiums or lost their access to a doctor of healthcare provider in the last year? Got at least one of those?
They say it won't make repairs.
That's, I call that losing your health insurance, Tom. Okay. I asked that sort of, we're sort of getting a feel as we go around the district to, you know, how some of these issues are sort of affecting people in general. So I appreciate that. Okay. Who, not counting the people from WKRG in Mobile that just walked in the room, who drove here the furthest to get to the town hall? Anybody drive from outside of the county? Anybody drive from Atmore or Flemington? Or you did. All right, well, then you drove the furthest, so you get to ask the first question, Joe.
I get to ask the first question. One of the concerns I've got is...
Got to use the microphone.
I'd go back before 2007 when things were doing good. And, you know, running a business, you want to make money. And you would like to have a rainy day fund, like they do in Montgomery or anywhere. Y'all don't have one in Washington, I know. But if you create a rainy day fund in a small business, the federal government's going to take it all away from you on taxes. And, you know, that's the issue I've seen basically since 2006. Our rainy day fund went away. And there's no way to save, if the economy gets better, there's no way to save that money to cover those gaps if it continues to go bad. That would be my big concern. There's, if you save it, you're going to get it taxed right away from you.
Well, one of the problems, and thank you for that, Joe, one of the problems that we have in general with the American economy, and it's true for this economy down here as it is all over the nation, is that we substantially increase taxes and regulations on small and medium-sized businesses at the very time when we depend upon small and medium-sized businesses to help lead the way in our recovery in terms of producing jobs. Now, what we don't have right now is a healthy economy. And a healthy economy by my definition is one where people can find real, full-time, regular, good-paying jobs that provide benefits. Unfortunately, today, we've got too many people who are working part-time when they want to work full-time. People are working full-time but at a lower wage level because they're working far below their skill level. And far too many people have just dropped out of the workforce altogether. Now, part of that is a result of the recession. But it's been made worse by the fact, and certainly the recovery's been slowed down by the fact, that over the last few years, we've loaded a lot of taxes and regulations on our private sector economy, the people that create jobs, and the workers themselves. So, you know, what we see now is like the economy is like a good fire. We've got to go in good and the fire's good and hot, then we throw sand on it and put it out. And with all these taxes and regulations, we're depressing the heat of our economy. So, you know, we know how to do this. We watched President Reagan do it in the 80s. I mean, people forget, President Reagan inherited a terrible economy. President Obama inherited a terrible economy. President Reagan lowered taxes and lowered regulations. President Obama increased taxes, increased regulations. President Reagan got a good, strong recovery in his economy. President Obama has a very anemic recovery. I don't think you have to be an economist to understand what's going on here. We've got to reduce regulations, reduce taxes, and lift the economy, which creates jobs for people. So, in general, that's what we've got to do for everybody, whether it's your particular business or businesses in general, and for the people that work in this country. And one of the best ways to do that is to have tax reform. And if you have real tax reform, you can lower tax rates on everybody and at the same time make sure everybody's paying their fair share. And that'll lift our economy. It's something I think is very strong for us to do. Other questions or comments? It doesn't have to be a question, it can be a comment, if you want to offer a comment on anything. Okay, I can go home now. No. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Since you were asking, it wasn't why I came today. But my husband, who of course is working, would say, for all the small rural hospitals, our hospital is really struggling. Whatever anybody's healthcare is, what the push and the impetus is, is for people to go to regional medical centers. And, you know, we struggle with people just to have transportation in Mobile if they should have, you know, a major crisis that our hospital can't handle. So, you know, encouraging everybody to travel long distances for care is not a practical option. And so, you know, I would just say, you know, when the Hill-Burton Act, you know, created these rural hospitals, there was a reason for that. And we're going the other direction, and all the people, especially the poor, are losing services because of that. So, I would just...
Yeah, that's a, well, I think it's not just a question of the quality of care. I think it is a question of the expense. Because if you add in all the expenses of somebody to travel long distances for treatment, that's a part of the expense of healthcare. But more to the point, we can get people healthier quicker, which also saves money if we have healthcare closer to where they live. The further they have to travel, the less likely they are to access healthcare as and when they need it, which means they get even more unhealthy, whatever their problem is, and it becomes more expensive. And the most expensive time for us to offer medical treatment to you is when you're really, really, really sick or ill or injured. So, the quicker we can get you and get you before you get that far down, so we can keep you at a healthier level, the less expensive it is to us. So, I equate quality of care with trying to keep costs down. And a lot of people in this healthcare debate have gotten those confused, like you either push down the cost and drive down the cost of care, or you push up the cost and drive up the quality of care. I think you can have efficient use of medical dollars and better care. Yes, Ted?
Rural hospitals for the same service get paid less than a city hospital gets paid. Exactly the same thing. And that's one of the qualities that you're talking about.
You know, that's a problem across Alabama because of the reimbursement rates that are set by the federal government under the federal programs like Medicare and Medicaid. You actually can go across the state line into either Florida or Mississippi if you're a provider and get paid more than if you get paid in Alabama for the exact same thing because of the way the federal government has set the reimbursement rates under those programs. I hear that all the time from providers. And I don't understand why they're penalizing healthcare providers in Alabama as opposed to people that are right next door in Mississippi or Florida. So, it's one of the things, one of the big questions we're, my office is going to be asking, you know, why do we have that differential in reimbursement rates? And what, as we go through dealing with this healthcare issue, what can we do about that? Because that affects the quality of care. I mean, it's only so far we can expect healthcare providers to go if we've got these unreasonably low reimbursement rates just because of where you live or where your healthcare provider is, you should say.
Bradley, I'll...
Yeah, John?
I'll make a comment about that, too. It seems like all the policies in regard to healthcare, transportation, infrastructure are somewhat detrimental to the rural areas. I know it's a sort of a catch-22, so, well, we've got to split all the population is in the metropolitan areas, so that's where we put our resources. And in the meantime, the rural area's dying on the vine, whereas if we put some of those resources there, ironically enough, it would relieve some of the problems in the urban areas because you would create opportunities for jobs and expansion in the rural areas. The second part I want to talk about, I know a little bit, I'm preaching to the choir a little bit, but the regulations are the, I've been in banking since well all my life mostly, but worked in the bank since 1975, and this is the worst I've ever seen it. And all of this is coming down in to say, well, we're going to protect the consumer. We're going to help the consumer. But just to give you an example of the regulations that would combine the real estate settlement procedure, what's called the HUD1, and the truth in lending disclosures, is about 1,900 pages of regulations. Not only can, it's difficult for a large institution to have the staff in order to keep up with those regulations, it's extremely difficult for smaller institutions. And who in the end is suffering from that is the consumer. I don't know how many people in here have applied for a mortgage loan or sold a mortgage loan recently, but it's a nightmare. It really is. It's expensive, it's confusing, and it's killing the housing market.
Yeah, well, let me respond to the first issue first and second issue second. I don't think you can economically develop the United States of America if you don't economically develop all of the United States of America, which includes rural and urban and, you know, in-between areas. I mean, you can't leave a big chunk of the population behind and expect to lift the country up economically. So, when we think about improving the economy in America, we've got to think about rural America or we're not going to make any real headway. Now, as you know, because I've been talking about this for some time, one of the most important things the federal government can do for economic development in a rural area is making sure that we're doing right by your infrastructure, roads and bridges. Because one of the things that makes you economically competitive is if we can connect you quicker through the appropriate road network to markets for people who would come here and locate businesses to be able to take their goods, whatever they are, to whatever market they'd need to go to. So, one of the things I've talked about, as you know, for a long time, is making sure that we four-lane US 31 all the way from here to Baymanet, which would be a tremendous boon to all of us, Gambi County. You know, I talk a lot about that I-10 span across Mobile Bay, which is extremely important. But I think those sorts of road projects are equally important because of what they can do economically for areas like Bruton, like Flemington, like Atmore. And I said that in Baymanet this morning, I thought I was going to get a standing ovation. I mean, you know, it's important to Baymanet, so we can connect up a lot of rural areas with a better road network that's better for everybody. And you know, Mayor Lovison and I have talked about this a lot. I feel very strongly about working with this area to try to figure out how we can take advantage of Airbus opportunity. This isn't like an automobile plant. The suppliers do not have to be right next door to that plant. You're going to know way, way in advance when the jet rolls off the line when your part is needed. And the drive time, particularly if we get, you know, a four-lane like that done, the drive time would be minuscule compared to what the lead times are on normal when those parts are going to be needed for the jet. There are 2 million parts in an A320 jet airplane, 2 million. We made 10% of them in southwest Alabama. That's an enormous boon to our economy. And I see that coming down the road. So, that's, I'm excited about being able to work on that. You know, you remember this, back in my younger years, I was a bank lawyer. And I used to have to be the one to make sure that my clients, banking clients, were complying with all those regulations. And when I started out, which was about the same time you did, there were regulations, but it wasn't like it is now. Now, we've passed all these regulations that are supposed to benefit consumers, and I go to closings, I've been to some closings for me personally, and you sit there and you sign piece of paper after piece of paper after piece of paper. Who in the world has the time to sit there and read all that stuff that the federal government has now required us to put in all those pieces of paper? It's not really helping the consumer any. It's certainly making everything more difficult in order to make the loans and close the loans. So, the federal government, that's a great example of the federal government getting in the way. You know, first, we should take the hypocritical oath in Washington, first, do no harm. And we're doing harm, and that's a perfect example of a regulation that's doing harm. I don't know what was wrong with our regulatory scheme for consumer stuff and basic lending, particularly in rural areas, prior to 2008, that we had to go and heap all this stuff on that. The problems were in big places like New York. They worked with your bank and other banks in rural areas. Yet, we put all these regulations that come raining down on you that just make it more difficult for us to bring back the rural economy when you weren't the source of the problem to begin with. So, that's another example of where the federal government acts and just goes way too far, and we've got to bring it back, got to rein it back. I know it's going to be difficult to do that because of all that went into passing that law after the 2008 meltdown, but we're clearly making a mistake and hurting our economy by what we put on banks. Other questions or comments? I'm going to stand here for a little while because I know there's somebody out there. Somebody's got a burning question. Just need, yes, ma'am, there we go.
Okay. I'm a retired educator. And we, well, we notice every time the teachers get a raise, our insurance go up. And with the economy going, continuously going up, can you do anything to help the educators get enough money to balance out, you know, the insurance part getting higher and the ones that's on a fixed income, something goes like it?
Well, this isn't something that's specifically focused on teachers, but it's focused on all of us. And that is that we had a problem with healthcare coverage prior to the passage of the President's healthcare plan. And it affected 20% of the people in this country who didn't have health insurance or Medicare or Medicaid. The other 80% of us did. So, we passed a law and a program to fix the problem of the 20%, except that it's caused all these problems for the other 80%. And that's part of the reason why your health insurance costs are going up. The teacher's health insurance program in Alabama has an extra, lends an extra $100 million this year in costs. About $100 million in the teacher's health insurance plan this year just because of the new healthcare law. And what's happening is, some of that cost is being pushed off on you and active teachers as well because they got to figure out a way to pay for it. This law's not working. I mean, all you got to do is pick up the newspaper and tell it's failing all over the country. We had a report came out today that said that the state of Oregon had spent tens of millions of dollars from their healthcare site and have signed up zero people. So, we know it's not working. Now, there was a problem before, and we needed to fix it. We just picked the wrong way to fix it. So, here's how we fix it. We repeal that law. And we put in its place a market-based solution. Here's what that means. What we've never been able to do in America as healthcare consumers is shot nationwide for our health insurance. Let's open the health insurance market up to where you could go on your computer or however you want to go shop for insurance and shop for insurance all over America and get the policy that you want that fits your budget for your needs. So, you return healthcare consumers into the consumers we are for everything else. I mean, we don't tell you when you want to go buy a loaf of bread, you can only buy a loaf of bread from these people in the state of Alabama. We say buy a loaf of bread from however you want to get it, or a car or anything else. Yet, we've limited you and your health insurance options. Let's open up options for people. Let's give people more choices and let people choose this policy that works for me, that I'm willing to pay this much money for. Instead of the federal government coming in and telling you exactly what kind of coverage you have to have at a high level and requiring all these other things that have jacked up the cost of insurance and healthcare in general, well, we can avoid most of that by letting insurance companies and healthcare providers compete in a marketplace, a real marketplace. And we know from what happens in real marketplaces that at least keeps costs down. Let me say this. One of the reasons why healthcare costs more now than it used to is because we can do more. 50 years ago, if you had just about any type of cancer, you died. If you had a problem with your hip, you were lame. If you had cataracts, you went blind. If you had a heart problem, circulatory problem, you died of a stroke or heart attack. Now, if you get a lot of different types of cancer, we can either cure you or put you in remission. If you have a hip problem, we replace your hip, give you a bionic hip. If you've got a cataract problem, we put you in outpatient procedure, fix your cataracts, you're out, and a couple of days later, you're seeing just as good as new. And if you have hypertension, we have drugs we can give you that we didn't have 50 years ago. We've got all those things that we didn't used to have, but they cost something. So, healthcare has gone, healthcare costs have gone up to some extent because we can do more for your health problems. What we need to do is move away from just treating those symptoms and creating healthy people. The problem in America is not that we don't have the best healthcare system in the world. We do. It's too expensive because we don't have this competition in there to help keep costs down, but it's also more expensive because we have some healthcare problems in America different from the rest of the world because we haven't had a healthcare system that concentrates on making people healthy and well. And sometimes it's little stuff, not, didn't say it was easy to do, like keeping our weight down, avoiding certain behaviors that we know are bad for our health, and reduce a lot of the healthcare symptoms we have. So, if you bundle all that up together, we can still have the best healthcare system in the world, we can get the health coverage that we want and how we want to pay for it, and we can live healthier, longer lives. I say bundling those rings up that way is a good way to have healthcare instead of what we're trying to force on the American people today, which is not working. Other questions, comments?
You hadn't been there long enough to get yourself...
Give me some time. Give me some time and I'll really create a steak.
Congressman, if you would, please share about the committees or subcommittees to which you're assigned and the highlights and no lights of each, please, and how they relate to Alabamians.
Well, thank you. Boy, I appreciate that. I came in the middle of a Congress, so I didn't come through the usual process, you know. At the beginning of every Congress, you reorganize the Congress. Well, they did that a year ago, and so I come when that's already been done. So, I could only pick in terms of committee assignments from what was available. There were a number of committee vacancies, and the two that I asked for, and the two that I got, and I'm really pleased that the leadership gave me the two that I asked for, were Armed Services and Natural Resources. Armed Services is important for my district for several different reasons. We have a, we have two major shipyards in my district, one that does purely Navy work and another does some Navy work. We have a shipyard right next door in Pascagoula that employs 1,700 people in my district, even though the shipyards in Pascagoula, 1,700 people in my district work over there. Obviously, we have some people that go back and forth with Pensacola Naval Air Station, which is important. And then we have a number of smaller suppliers to the defense industry that are dotted all around my district, not to mention the number of people that are in active service or in the reserves or National Guard or retired from the Armed Services. So, that has a huge impact on my district. And getting on the Armed Services Committee was a coup, and I'm very grateful for that. Plus, it's a great committee. It's got good people on it, a really fine chairman, and we're dealing with some pretty important stuff. I mean, the security of the United States of America, which is a big thing. The second committee, Natural Resources, deals with things like offshore energy production, very important in my district when you think about where it is, offshore fisheries. Now, let me tell you, are you a fisher person?
I can.
You can?
No.
Lots of people in our area fish in the Gulf of Mexico. We've had a huge issue over the totally unreasonable restrictions that we've had on the length of our snapper season, when the snapper stock have never been bigger. So, this committee deals with that, and we're working on a fix for that problem. Sounds like a small problem. Lots of people do it recreationally. There's also a huge commercial impact here, commercial fishermen and the charter boat captains, which is a huge industry down there at Orange Beach. So, that's big. They also, the Natural Resources also governs Indian tribes. So, we have the jurisdiction over legislation that would affect the Porch tribe. That's obviously big for my district. And then finally, the Restore Act, which is the law that was passed that helps, you know, decide where the federal money that's coming to the Gulf Coast from the BP oil spill, it's actually BP money. The Restore Act came through that committee. So, to the extent that there will be oversight over the implementation expenditure of money under the Restore Act, that'll come through that committee. So, I picked those two committees, and I was given those two committees because we knew of the very important connections between their jurisdiction and things that matter directly to our district. So, I'm very pleased with them. Now, on the Armed Services Committee, I'm on the Sea Power Subcommittee. That deals directly with the Navy and the provision of the Navy. I'm also on something called the Tactical Air, which is not just airplanes, it's also the way we lift things and men and equipment and weapons to certain places, which includes airplanes and helicopters. On the Natural Resources, I'm on the Fisheries Committee, which deals with that Subcommittee, which deals with that fisheries problem, and with power generation, which is another issue under our committee. So, I've got some pretty important committee assignments. I can tell you, on the Armed Services Committee, we have some of our hearings and meetings and markups that are public, but because of the nature of that committee, some of those are not public. They're closed doors, and the only people allowed in that room are people with top security clearances. And we are told things that I can't repeat that are part of our decision-making on providing for your national security. And I take that responsibility very seriously. And if you sat through some of the committee hearings I've sat through, particularly the closed-door ones, you understand what I'm saying. This is very serious stuff. On the Natural Resources side, we've already had committee hearings on the snapper and the fisheries around the country. And I feel like we're going to have a new piece of legislation that will deal with it. So, my committee assignments are part of my overall effort to make sure I use that office that I hold for you to try to do things for you and the other 700,000 people that live in this district that I'm supposed to be serving in Washington. Yes, sir, Mr. County Commissioner?
Congressman, we hear a lot of negative out of Washington, but will you share with us some of your first impressions of how you feel Washington has treated you and how you think you can get things done?
Yeah, I don't want to sound like Jimmy Stewart at Mr. Smith Goes to Washington, but it's been great. People have been wonderful to me. And they've been over backwards, they knew I was coming in the middle of the Congress. I didn't have the regular time and orientation. They've been over backwards to help me, Democrats and Republicans. It's been bipartisan. And I've been very pleased with that. People understand that this district has a long history of people who've had pretty significant impact on the Congress. So, when you show up there, you're not just Bradley Byrne, you're the guy that's taking the same place that was held by Jack Edwards and Sunday Callahan and Joe Bonner, all three of whom have just the highest respect up there. So, I benefit from that. You benefit from that from my being there. So, I've had a very positive experience. I mean, the day I was sworn in, I was the only person sworn in, and after I raised my right hand and turned around to give my little talk, every one of the members of the United States House of Representatives stopped and was quiet, which is in and of itself an amazing thing. Everybody's quiet at one time. They stopped and they're quiet and they listen to me. And I wasn't just representing me, I was representing you. That was a tremendous moment, very awe-inspiring moment. I've been able to actually be the Speaker Pro Tempore, which means I sit in the chair with the gavel. Dangerous thing, isn't it, thinking I'm going to be there with the gavel? It's an awe-inspiring experience. Once again, I'm not representing me, I'm there you because at any one period of time, 2 to 2 and 1/2 million people are watching that on C-SPAN. And they'll say, Speaker Pro Tempore Bradley Byrne, Alabama District 1. And people will sometimes go and Google it up and say, where is Alabama District 1? Well, it includes Bruton, Alabama. So, when I'm sitting up there, I'm representing you in the fullest sense of it, and it's been great. And I'm going to be given other opportunities to do that. I'm going to take full advantage of them, not for me, but because I'm up there to use that, to help you. And I'm confident there'll be more opportunities, and I'm confident that we'll have more positive opportunities to do things for our district. opportunities to do things for our district. Thank you for asking that. I don't get to say all the positive stuff always. There's plenty of negative out there, you know, but this is a great country. We haven't been acting like it the last several years, I know that, but we're a great country, and we are a very powerful country. We just need to start living up to who we're supposed to be, and we'll be fine. Other questions or comments or concerns? Yeah?
Do you get a sense of feeling that there's any concern about the national debt?
Yeah. Lynn, there's a lot of concern about the national debt. I have a lot of concern about the national debt. I was not happy last week about the debt ceiling increase. I wish we could have gotten something for it, so I voted against it. You know, everybody in this room has to balance their personal budgets every month. Every business that's represented in this room has to balance their budgets every month. The Alabama Legislature that I used to serve in, whatever you think about the Alabama Legislature, passes their budgets every year on time, and they're balanced. And the government of the greatest nation the world has ever known can't balance a budget? Sometimes can't even pass a budget? That's crazy. We're better than that. Now, we need a constitutional amendment that requires a balanced budget, period. That's how the Legislature does it, they have to. And we need that in Washington. But you know, we balanced the budget in the late 90s with a Democratic President and a Republican Congress. We balanced the budget by lifting the restraints off the American economy and letting it grow, which produces more revenue for the government, stop, think about it, and having fiscal discipline to hold down spending. When you do that, budgets balance, and we actually started paying down the debt. Now, it seems like ancient history, but we did it, it's not brain surgery. So if we'll grow our national economy, that will grow the revenues for the federal government if we'll show the fiscal discipline that we should be able to show anyway and hold down our expenditures, then we can, as we have in the past, balance our budget, start paying down our debt for our children. And that's where we should understand that obligation lies. It's an obligation from my generation to my children's generation, and we've shirked that obligation, that's not acceptable to me. Yes, sir? Oh, I'm sorry, you first, then we'll go over here.
The administration has created a controversy about the use of coal to generate electric power, and that's only going to give us a negative impact economically. Can anything be done to solve that problem without stopping the use of coal?
Yes, sir, we, that's another issue that comes up on the Natural Resources Committee. This administration does not like any carbon-based fuel, coal first and foremost, but also oil and refined uses of oil and natural gas. And it's, I think, bad for the nation that they feel that way because we have an abundant supply of coal with the new technologies, oil and the new technologies, natural gas. And we ought to be able to take full advantage of all of those resources because if we are, we can become energy independent by the end of this decade. And we're already seeing the fruits of that because you're seeing international companies locating manufacturing concerns in the United States, manufacturing concerns that, you know, are heavily dependent upon high energy costs or low energy costs. And we can continue to benefit from that, see international manufacturing concerns located in the United States because we have low energy costs. So we need to push back, and we are in my committee. Our committee chairman, Doc Hastings, is, from Washington State, is absolutely committed to our committee doing everything we can to make sure our energy options in America are fully open and fully taken advantage of. But the administration obviously takes a different view, so it's a battle over that, and that's okay. I mean, the system of government was set up for competing interests to do battle, but I think this is a battle that's very important to our economy, and I suspect over time that we're going to win it because I think it's important to the individual citizens of this country, wherever they live, whatever political party they belong to, that we do that. And I think we'll win it, not with this administration, but over time, we're going to win it. Yes, sir, you had a question?
Mr. Burns, how do you stand with us on the Second Amendment rights, our hunting rights, the National Rifle Association, how do you connect with them and so forth?
I connect very well with NRA. They endorsed me early in my race, and I think with just about every commercial brochure I had, I had the NRA endorsement on there. There are not too many pieces of legislation that are pending in this Congress that are pro Second Amendment rights, but I think there's one in particular that we signed on as a cosponsor to. And of course, any that I think will abridge our Second Amendment rights, we will be against. I do not believe that this Congress is going to pass anything that would affect gun rights. The Senate, which has got, the other parties in control of the Senate, there's been some efforts, but they can't get one out of the Senate, and I just think it will die a quick death in the House if it gets there.
We know, you know, that many of us have been fighting forever, you go continue to fight for mega bucks, millions and millions of dollars, take our rights away.
Well, the Second Amendment means what it says. The Supreme Court has been very clear that it means what it says. And while Congress sometimes may get worked up because of a terrible event that's happened somewhere, the truth of the matter is guns don't kill people, people kill people. And that's a very personal thing to me. My grandfather was killed by a mentally ill person with a gun back in the 1920s. And my grandmother was left as a young widow to raise my mother and her two older brothers, my uncles. Back then, you didn't have Social Security, so she didn't have any government help to help her raise those kids. She did it on her own with the help of people in her neighborhood and her community, which is the way things used to be. And I never once heard my grandmother or my mother say, well, we should do something about limiting people's gun rights. In fact, my grandmother owned a gun because they understood that despite their personal loss, it wasn't the gun that killed my grandfather, it was the fact that a mentally ill person got his hands on a gun. So let's attack the real root of the problem, not be out there trying to do something to interfere with your rights and my rights to own guns. Other questions? Comments, anything? Well, I know, Mayor, that pretty soon here, they're going to start having court, and I know we need to clear up before then. Let me say a few things before we close up here. I love coming to Bruton. Part of it's because there's another guy here named Bradley Byrne that y'all get confused with me. And some of you have heard this story. I got elected to the State School Board the first time because I was on the ballot in Mobile, Baldwin, and Scamby Counties. I barely lost Mobile County, barely lost Baldwin County, couldn't get the returns from a Scamby County. I mean, y'all do your count and y'all go home. So I had to call up my cousin Brad and say, Brad, can you go figure out what's going on in my race? Of course, he'd been a circuit judge by then, I guess about 10 years, and y'all knew him pretty well, seemed to like him okay. He came over here, courthouse, got the returns, called me back. And I said, well? He said, we are doing just fine. And because of the votes here in Bruton across the Scamby County, I was elected, first time I ran, for the State School Board. And so I've always been deeply appreciative to Scamby County. My association with Ted Hughes when you were the mayor here, and now Yank, as he's been mayor, Lynn and I have worked together on school board stuff, gosh, seems like 20 years now, Lynn, and people all over this area, county commissioners, some of whom have been county commissioner a long time, we've had great working relationships. And I'm looking forward to having a continuation of that great working relationship as I support you and your local efforts and represent you in Washington. Because at the end of the day, when I walk out before the United States House of Representatives, which is an awe-inspiring thing to do, and I push the yay button or the nay button, I'm not pushing it for me, I'm pushing it for you and the other 700,000 people that I represent in Washington, and that is the most important responsibility a public official can ever have. And I want you to know, I take it seriously every day. Let us hear from you. Thank you for coming. God bless the United States of America.